This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
The great American philosopher said, Willie Nelson, "We're on the road again." We're grateful to be here. I apologize for the lateness tonight. We got hung up on a couple of issues, but we are ready to go. Welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, October 15th. This meeting is called to order, and I think I'm going to turn it over to Sarah.
Yes, so Sarah Sabel, fantastic high school staff member and involved in the arts in 100 different ways, both in Brighton and throughout the community, is going to begin by introducing. And for everybody here to know, this is part of our school board recognition, which is happening this week. And so grateful to all of your kids for spending time reminding everybody about the work that our board does in supporting all aspects of our school community, but particularly with this group of wonderful children. They're really representative of the work that you make sure can happen here and your support. So thank you for that. Sarah?
Thank you.
Before you start, Sarah, I'm going to tell you, just as soon as you begin, we're all going to get up and go over here so we can see everything. So I want you to know that's going to happen.
Don't be afraid.
We're not leaving.
Well, thank you. So I'm here on behalf of Tracy Blazer, who is Bill today, and says her best wishes. But thank you for having us tonight. We are here as a representation of some of the students from the Visual and Performing Arts Program here in Brighton to say thank you to you. And as we reflect on our gratitude for you each year, I think we are here as a representation of something larger that is very special about Brighton and comes from the culture that you as a board create. So as a parent in the district and as an educator in our music program, something that I am grateful for on a daily basis is our commitment to allowing students to study all of their passions to excellence, whether it is a career path for them or whether it's something that they are learning to recognize will enrich their lives. In our case, we are fortunate to train students that will go on as career musicians. But we are also cognizant of the fact that in Brighton, kids are good at a million things and passionate about a million things. But when they leave our program, our goal is that they see that music will enrich their lives, whether it is a career path or a hobby or whether they are a consumer. And we are grateful to you for creating that environment, both for music students but for students with so many passions. So as we offer these performances today, they are intended to be a sign of our gratitude for all of the opportunities that you create for our students here in the Brighton Central School District to study passions and to gain experiences that will allow them to leave our walls and be full, complete humans that appreciate the variety of experiences that they can take on when they leave. So as we go through the night, you'll hear kids from a bunch of different ensembles. They will introduce themselves to you and tell you a little bit about what they're playing. You'll hear five performances tonight, and we are so thankful for your time and attention to highlight some of our wonderful kiddos.
Sarah, can I ask one question? So Larry mentioned moving. I realize that some of the work is choreographed also. It was a choreograph for us to be sitting here, or are they going to be onstage?
I think everything is kind of pointed in this direction. So if you would like to stay there, you may. If you'd like to go out and sit amongst these adoring parents, fans, I think you could do that too. Either way, it's okay with us. Great. Thank you so much. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Hi, my name is Hannah Cowley, and I play flute in the eighth grade band.
My name is Livett Finn, and I also play flute in the eighth grade band. Over my years at Brighton, I have had so many amazing flute teachers, starting with my first teacher, Miss Parker, who taught me over Zoom, onto Mr. Dozer, who created the best environment and made the band so fun. Then I had Miss Lan, who was so kind to us and created scale masters, a game where you do scales to get handy. And now Mr. Freds. He always makes stand and lessons so fun and enjoyable. I always look forward to seeing him, and I'm so happy to be part of the Brighton music community.
Today, we will be playing Allegro Giocoso by Haydn. I would also like to say a special thank you to the board of education for having us play here tonight. I hope you enjoy.
Hi, my name's Juliana, and I am playing this piece with Tessa. Me and Tessa both started trumpet in fourth grade, playing with Mr. Dozer. We played until the pandemic and, of course, played through computer screens. Our skill develops along the many years of playing this instrument. We enjoy it. We love playing it. We all play for people. Today, me and Tessa both take lessons at Hofstein. We both have our own teachers, and I receive lessons from Herb Smith, who plays the RPO and has given me many opportunities to learn from different lessons. Me and Tessa both enjoy solo effects and love committing ourselves to these kinds of performances any way possible. And of course, "Be, and of course, if it's only possible," by the Brighton Board of Education. And I have a couple beautiful photos. Because of this, I would like to give a special thank you to Dr. McGowan for supporting the Visual and Performance Arts, and I hope you enjoy this piece. Hi, my name is Tessa Lindstrom, and we are going to play a short, catchy trumpet duet by Turk named "Aria," "Arietta." Thank you, and we hope you enjoy.
Hi all. My name is Noah Brooks, and I'm a junior at Brighton High School. Been playing violin for a really long time now. And I would say the most important thing about music to me is probably the outlet that it provides me to really explore my creative side and have fun while we're in it. Of course, I'd like to thank my accompanist, Miss Laura Dubin, while we play Mozart, the first movement from Mozart's Fourth Violin Concerto.
Hello, everybody. This is the tenor-based a cappella group, Maccapella. We're just going to go down the line and introduce you to our members.
I'm Teddy. I'm in ninth grade.
And Mel, I'm in 11th grade.
Hi, I'm Clem. I'm in ninth grade.
Hi, I'm Sage. I'm a director of Maccapella, and I'm in 11th grade.
Hello, I'm Krishna, and I'm in 11th grade.
Hello, I'm Henry Aeter. I'm a director of Maccapella, and I'm in 11th grade.
Hi, I'm Tobin, and I'm in ninth grade.
I'm Daniel. I'm in 10th grade.
I'm Charlie. I'm a director of Maccapella, and I'm in 10th grade.
I'm Marcus, and I'm in 10th grade.
Hello, my name is Ying Zhou, and I'm in 12th grade.
I am Colby Ronella, and I am in 10th grade.
We are so excited to perform for you all tonight, and we are so grateful for a board of education that gives us the opportunity to have such a rich experience as we get in a student-run a cappella group. And we will be performing "I Love You So" by The Walters, and Tobin Smith will be our soloist.
One, two, three, four. I just need someone in my life to give it structure, to handle all the selfish ways I spend my time without her. You're everything I want, but I can't handle all your lovers. You're saying I'm the one, but it's your actions that speak louder, giving me your love when you are down and need another. I've got to get away and let you go. I've got to get over. But I love you so. I love you so. I love you so. I love you so. I'm gonna pack my things and leave you behind. This feeling's cold, and I know that I made up my mind. I hope you feel what I felt when you shattered my soul, because you were cruel and bound and fooled, so please let me go. But I love you so.
Please let me go.
I love you so.
Please let me go.
I love you so. I love you so.
Howl it on, moving, fairytale.
Hi, we are the VHS Dance Club. I'm Betty Metzler.
I'm Debbie Cathy.
I'm Samuel Aboway.
I'm Abby David.
I'm Emma McGowan.
I'm Casey Howell.
I'm Michelle Arnold.
I'm Molly Beckensar.
I'm Sarah Zinkins. And Abby and Emma and Megan are going to tell you a little bit more about Dance Club.
Hi. So so far in Dance Club, I've had so much fun because everybody here is so inclusive, so generous, and so kind.
Hi. I love to dance so much, and I am so grateful to be welcomed into the VHS Dance Club by all these wonderful people.
Hi. I'm the founder of VHS Dance Club, and we just wanted to express how grateful we are that the board has given us opportunities to spend time with people that share our same passions. Tonight, we're going to be performing the head role thriller in the spirit of Halloween. We hope you enjoy.
Midnight hour is close at hand. For your fall, the search of blood. Your eyes, yours, may run. And bright lights, they rise. Your eyes start to shiver. For the evil, the madness. And you are lost, the thriller.
So that concludes our performances from our students. To the board, we definitely hope that you will take them in the spirit that we intended as a gift of our gratitude and a symbol of the awesome opportunities that you provide for our students. We're grateful to you.
I mentioned at the beginning, but I just want to be clear. That is such a great display of the extras and the different things that happen in this community, and clearly, parents very committed to it also. But, you know, both Sarah and Jess mentioned this in different ways, but the kids did also, the opportunities that you provide them. And I know I say this to you every year, but I want to go back to this idea of, you know, mid-1600s or so, when colonies first formed school boards, not any of you, but first formed school boards. And school committees, marxists, maybe through time. Marv is probably watching. Sorry, Marv. Larry said it, not me. And people decided in their community that they needed a group of people to figure out the education for their kids and to represent their best interests. And in every way, what they would teach, how they would teach, and they took this very direct role. And then in our state, really early 1800s, when that first started to happen, and the school boards here who followed that very same tradition of figuring out the best ways to approach kids. And the roles started to become more defined over a period of time and a policymaking role. But you come from this long line of people deciding, here's what we want for our kids. And in this community, that demonstration of the arts and the extra things that you protect every year in the budget process is really reflective of that. You know, you're in a community where that's super important, and you're elected to help protect that too and have done a remarkable job of that. So you're providing that opportunity for kids, so thank you for that. And to that end, this is School Board Recognition Week throughout New York State. I've also mentioned this before, but there are nearly 700 districts in our state, three, five, seven, or nine, usually seven, board members in every one of those school districts. Volunteers throughout the state of New York. The average time that they say board members, they think, spend on their board service is six hours per week. In many cases, it's a lot more for all of you, and we want you to know how much we appreciate that, giving us the opportunity to focus on what kids need each and every day and volunteering your time to represent the community in that regard. So there's a couple of things for you. Another representation of the talent of our kids saying thank you to you. If you'd like to open up, there's a gift in front of you, please. So we're going to invite the artist, actually, to board meeting to explain to case two. Tonight was not possible, but we want to unveil that all at the same time.
He's the best to hold it up.
What a beautiful work, what's that?
He's the best to hold it up so we can see. Yeah, that might be best.
Where is it?
Oh, Bill's got it.
Thank you.
Tell me when, Bill.
Yeah, I'm excited.
You did, Bill?
Thank you.
And I would like to pass this round, please take one while I read a thank you from the Monroe County School Boards Association. Monroe County School Board Association thanks each and every one of you for your dedication and hard work. As a board member, board of education member, your selfless service makes a meaningful difference in the lives of our local students. Thank you for helping us recognize school board members throughout Monroe County and for being school board members here in Monroe County. So congratulations to each other.
Thank you.
Last but absolutely not least, Jamie Porter from the Brighton Teachers Association has a few words that he'd like to say from the floor.
Good evening, everybody. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. As I was preparing for this evening's speech, I was talking to myself and I said, self? You're not the best person at giving pretty speeches. You know, what is the BTA good at? And the light came on and the three words, writing contract language, came on. So, I've created a memorandum of agreement I would like to propose, and it's a proclamation of the board. Now, I know that Dr. McGowan is always super psyched when I propose an MOA.
Literally can't wait.
Yeah, yeah. And as this is an agreement between the BTA and the district, just to give Kevin a heads up, I did take some creative license here and some liberties with his opinion. But, as with all proposed contract language, it is all negotiable. Do you mind if I approach the bench and drop off a couple copies real quick?
I think Lou is sweating more than I am.
Approach away.
Whereas, the mission of our public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of all our children and to empower them to become skilled, productive contributors to a democratic society who can succeed in an ever-changing world. And, whereas, local school board members are committed to our community's children and believe that all children can be successful learners and that the best education is tailored to the individual needs of the child. And, whereas, local school board members work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the robust educational vision we want for our students. And, whereas, local school board members are responsible for ensuring the structure that provides an exceptional foundation for our school system. And, whereas, local school board members provide an environment which encourages enthusiasm for learning for all our children enrolled in the Brighton Public Schools. And, whereas, local school members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. And, whereas, these volunteer representatives serve the town of Brighton's children well, giving tremendous time, energy, and dedication and have greatly contributed to the positive future of this community. Now, therefore I, Jamie Porter, president of the Brighton Teachers Association, and in collaboration with the superintendent, do hereby declare our appreciation to the members of the Brighton Board of Education and proclaim that I think that they're all the bee's knees. Except for the president of the board, Mr. Larry Davis, who I proclaim the cat's meow. I urge all Brighton residents to join us in recognizing the dedication and hard work that our local school board members do and the work that they create when the edu... and it... Sorry, pardon me. And the work and to work with them to create an educational system that is rigorous, supportive, inspiring, and meets the needs of all our children. An official recognition whereof, I hereby fix my signature this 15th day of October, 2024. Kevin, I have a copy here that you can look over that's signed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate that and obviously, more importantly, appreciate the work of all your members on behalf of our kids. Thank you very much.
Kevin signing it too.
Also signed, we'll have that notarized and taken care of right away. Especially the cat's meow.
We're changing highlights right now. The cat's meow.
Okay, that's great. I'll speak for just a moment on behalf of my fellow board members. Thank you to everyone. They say that this is a volunteer job and unpaid, but tonight we got paid. We saw some great performances from kids. A lot of student-led groups and just great energy and enthusiasm. So, I always think that's how we get paid. So, that was pretty cool and just a wide diversity of a tremendous number of kids, all of whom have more talent in one finger than I have in my entire body. But yeah, just a great night. Love seeing the student performances. So, our thanks on behalf of the board to Sarah and everybody who was behind putting everything together and our video crew, so I hope people are able to watch it. Violet, Mike, Bill, and Jack Whitmer, who is the theater technical director, who may or may not still be back there, but that way we've got it captured. So, my thanks to all of them also for getting that on video. But, a great way to get paid tonight. We didn't even think that was, you know, we thought this was an unpaid job and it's not.
I'll just finish by saying we can't thank you enough personally, professionally, on behalf of the kids, other parents in the community, community members and the staff. We couldn't do what we do without you and mean that very deeply and sincerely, so thank you.
We'll move forward on the agenda. As with every public meeting, we provide the opportunity for public participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come up and speak and actually ask a question or address an issue? Seeing none, we will move on to the approval of the agenda. You all have received the agenda prior to arriving here tonight. Are there any questions on the agenda? Motion to approve the agenda as received. Moved by owner?
Second.
Seconded by Karen, all those in favor? You've also received the minutes from the October 1st Board of Education meeting. Any questions, changes, edits to those minutes? Motion to approve those minutes as written?
So moved.
Moved by Susan?
Second.
Seconded by Esther, all those in favor? One of the aspects of being on the road again is we get to see some of the work that has been completed in schools, but also get to hear about some of the work that is yet planned to be completed. So, given that, we're gonna ask Lou Limo and John Novelli to come up and talk a little bit about what's going on here at FRES and also address a couple of issues at Council Rock. Lou, John?
Good evening. And on behalf of all the support staff and certainly all the administrators, we want to thank the Board of Education for all your support. We're gonna give, and we certainly appreciate this opportunity to visit each of the schools and provide a facilities update. If you think about it, since 2017, this Board of Education has overseen over $100 million worth of capital improvements to our school district. It's very quite impressive. So today, we're gonna highlight French Road and we'll start with, you know, what we have accomplished over the years. Again, everything the board has seen before. But in the 2017 project, we really tried to strike a balance of modernization and improvements to our instructional spaces while also meeting the, you know, the structural needs of the building. So roofworks, HVAC upgrades. And on the instructional side, art and music suites, the library, things that we're really proud of. Then we got back in 2022, '23, significant upgrade to our playground facilities. And again, more investment in our HVAC systems and those core building systems that are so important, including the cooling tower replacement. So at this point, I'll turn it over to John Novelli, our Director of Buildings and Grounds, to highlight some of the work that's being designed right now and that'll be forthcoming. And then I'll ask Ms. Coggins to talk about her instructional priorities and the impact that construction has had on her school. So with that, Mr. Novelli.
Good evening. So, as Lou said, this is the 2022, '23 Phase Two. So, this project, we began this summer. We've already accomplished a lot in that short amount of time. As you guys saw during our tour, we took a tour of the new beautiful gym. You know, we installed new flooring, new paint. All of the lighting got replaced. So, everything is looking the way that it should. More important though, we were able to, at the same time, replace the ventilation unit and the rooftop unit that actually will now actually bring air into the gym, which has been well overdue. The ventilation system that was put in is state-of-the-art, where, you know, we are now bringing in maximum outside air. It is cleaning up the air that everybody is breathing. There has a MRF-14 filter system in it, which is recommended by the Health Department. So we're now meeting all of these standards going there.
We just, I know that was, I think, turned over today. It was a little bit late, but turned over today. Absolutely looks fantastic. A bright space, smells great, just looks absolutely fantastic. And as we walked down here, I saw there's already kids working out for basketball in there as we came by. So, to you and Colleen, just looks fantastic. It's a little bit delayed, which we don't like, but it just looks fantastic.
Yeah, thank you. So the next thing that we're gonna be starting this spring, we're gonna be starting the front vestibule work, which is basically going to make the place a more secure area. You will be coming into the building and there'll be two different secured sections that you need to go through to enter the building. We will also be redesigning the facade and signage out in front as part of this project as well. As we go along, we're gonna be replacing some outdated heat pumps. And as we're doing the heat pumps, we will go through and do the flooring, the ceilings, and new LED lighting to improve our current standards to try to get to where we're moving our way through all the highlighted areas. We also have a section of work that we're gonna be putting into this project as an alternate. Meaning that if there is money left over, enough money to go through, we will continue to pick up on the work that we started of modernizing all of the existing classrooms. That'll all entail all brand-new heat pumps, all new lighting, ceilings, flooring, so that we can keep moving forward a little bit at a time until we get to the actual completion of having all of the rooms renovated at the very end. One of the other things that we'll be doing this year is we're gonna be working in this space and in the kitchen. We're gonna be bumping out a section of the existing kitchen right now that, right now, holds the freezer-cooler area. That area will turn into dry storage space. It'll actually open up the area even more so. That'll give our staff more prep room, more work room to be able to get the kids in quicker, more efficiently through. And while we're in there, the, a lot of the equipment that's in there that they use to cook on is outdated, which we'll be replacing as part of that. Once we're finished in there, we're gonna move ourselves out here and work on this area. This area is slated for all brand-new flooring, new ceilings, new lights, new heating and air conditioning in here. And we are in the works of working some new lighting for productions on the stage as well. The lighting on the stage will be replaced as part of this project as well to get this area to be more of a performance area when we are completed with it. That's all that I have, any questions?
No, I mean, we got a bunch of projects going on for the next couple of years. I think the other thing I'd add, John, is we sometimes get approval for work that we either have to do during the summer so they have more access or work around school start and stop time. So, we're talking about work that'll take place over this year, '25 and '26, just based on how that work has to be done.
That's correct.
I appreciate the management of all that that you guys have to go through.
Thank you.
As you mentioned, '24, '25, '26, this is something we're very excited about, which will most likely be coming in the summer of 2026. That will be reconfiguring the current bus loop, so we can fit all of our buses at the same time. Currently and over the past couple of years, we have about eight or nine buses that are sitting out at Rich Beginnings, waiting to come in once the first wave of buses come or leave the parking lot. So, once we can get the Chevron-style parking in there, it'll be fantastic to dismiss all of our kids at the same time. So we're very excited for this next piece as well. Now that I've been at FRES for a year and a few months, I've been able to really walk around the building, see things that we'd benefit from having some improvements on. So these are just some of the areas that we've been looking at. Continuing to enhance our classrooms for 21st century learning. Continuing to look at building a gross motor space. If you've walked through the building, there's the old main entrance and that's an available space that we could reconfigure to provide some more mental health offices, as well as just work how kids are coming in. Cause they're coming in the doors, they're going to the right or the left, and the old main office is right there in the middle. So that's another area we hope to look at. The playground we got last year is absolutely fabulous. The kids are out there all the time. A wish, a goal, a want would be hopefully getting a third or another play space out by the third grade. We have about 750 kids and trying to get them all out there at the same time can get a little tricky. So if we could have an additional play space, that would be wonderful. Again, out behind the third grade part of the building on the field there. Some other building system updates that we're looking at is we've got, we have some newer bathrooms and we would love to update all of our existing older bathrooms with the same lighting, the same furnishings, all the interiors there. As John had mentioned before, updating the lighting and flooring throughout the building is something that we're looking forward to as well. As the building gets older, replacing the exterior doors and some of the hardware is a necessity, just as they're wearing with age. And also looking at some physical improvements such as the faculty room. So those are things we're looking forward to in the next two years. And then again, these are just some classrooms of our goals and what we're looking for for the vertical spaces for learning, as well as the 21st century furniture. But the biggest one is the celebration that's been mentioned numerous times today is getting those kids on the gymnasium today, just in time for the cold weather and the frosty mornings. So, we really lucked out having a really mild September and dry for the most part. So, it's exciting having the kids back in there, there are cheers today. It was wonderful having a space for our kids to go to, waiting for wave two buses as well. So, we're very excited about where we are.
It looks great, congratulations.
We also want to take this opportunity to update the Board of Education on what the education plan is for the upcoming capital project vote for Council Rock Primary School. So, to make his board meeting debut in front of the cameras, he always does so much behind the scenes. I'd like to invite up Dan Goldman to give the Board of Education an update on how we're marketing this and how we're trying to build understanding of what we're trying to accomplish and the project goals. So, Mr. Goldman.
All right, so everyone in our community received an email on Friday with the announcement about the capital project. That went out via Parent Square to everyone on our mailing list, was posted to our district website and also to our social media channels. We launched a new website, which can be accessed easily at bcst.org/capitalproject. That has the announcement, past presentations, the video from the board meeting where it was presented, and that will host all the future information about the project. We have a fact sheet that will be coming out later this week. We will be doing a district newsletter that will have an article about the capital project and include the fact sheet being mailed to homes. We will do a postcard mailing about the vote and announcing the public hearing and community forum going out in November. Of course, the public hearing and community forum are being held on November 19th at 5:00 and 7:00 p.m. Campus Construction is gonna provide some display boards that we can put up in our school lobbies, so visitors can get a close look at those, the information about the project. And we will have the usual banners on display around the community announcing when the vote is happening.
You know, Dan, I think one of our constant challenges is you're getting feedback from people saying, I didn't know. And you've got here, I don't know what the number is, six, eight different ways that we're trying to communicate with the community, whether it's email, whether it's social media, whether it's actual physical banners, outside schools, display boards, things that arrive in the USPS mail. So, first, on behalf of the board, our thanks to you for getting all these different media challenges, channels rather, to address the challenge of how we let people know. And, you know, I know it's frustrating to me when I hear it from someone saying, you know, I wasn't aware and I'm going, I don't know what else to do sometimes. That's a personal frustration, that's not you. So, again, on behalf of the board, our thanks for all the different ways you're trying to communicate with our community to answer their questions, to let them know what we're trying to do, what the potential impact is for our entire community. And it also... And it also provides a resource so we can say to somebody, "Go look at this," and we have eight or nine different things, or "Go check your mail that may have come in the last week to see if it's in there." So just a note of thanks from all of us for all that you're doing to try to make sure our community is aware.
Thank you.
Great job to all of you. And, Dan, love your debut in front of the camera.
Yeah.
You're the guy who does so much for everybody in front of the seat, who's always behind. But all the, John, Colleen, Lou, thank you very much.
There's a lot that we always talk about that goes into managing the projects that are in process and the projects that are being prepared for a vote. So Lou and that buildings team do a phenomenal job, and we all know that. Any questions from the board in regards to either anything we saw tonight at FRES or anything that's upcoming for Council Rock? No? Great. Thank you all again. It's time for principal reports. And obviously, since we're in French Road, we probably should hear from Danielle first.
That just means the HPC is working very fast.
That is correct.
At least the AC part.
While I pull up my presentation, just asked, I just wanted to say something that we've been talking a lot about at school in the last week or so. I can't tell you how many times I walk around and people say, "I think we're coming back." That is just the feel that we have in the building. I think I talked a little bit about it last month, but it feels like we're coming out of COVID finally. Like, it feels normal, it feels good. I just stood in the hall the other day, and I watched two sixth graders hold hands and skip down the hallway. It was just like, we're coming back, right? It just, that feel throughout the building, it just, I can't articulate it other than to say we're coming back, and it feels really, really good. And so it's been a really great start to the year, and I feel like we just were here presenting not too long ago. So we don't have a lot that has happened, but the things that have happened have been really exciting. So we were able to hold our annual ice cream social at the begin, the end of September, beginning of October, and we have just about 30 students who participate in our urban-suburban program. And we had them all enjoy ice cream sundaes and get together and just spend some time with each other. Mr. Green came over. We had folks from the urban-suburban program over, and we just kind of spent some time together just being and enjoying each other's company. So that was a nice experience to end a day in one of our early weeks. We also participated in outdoor education, which, as you know, has been a staple in Brighton for over 50 years. We shifted venues this year to the YMCA camp in Pittsburgh. And though it was a different venue, it offered so many of the same amazing opportunities that students have had out at Rotary Camp. So you can see students were able to enjoy egg drop competitions, or they had to create different capsules to make sure that, or to see if they could land an egg from a high peak that it was dropped from. They were able to participate in archery. They were able to build smores. They played capture the flag. They did, what else did they do? They had one of those big air mats, you know, that the kids jump up and down on. I think the teachers had more fun than the kids on that, but there was a lot of fun spent there. They had lunch together. And, you know, I've heard some people say, "Oh, it's just not the same. It's not like it was when we were out at Rotary." If you asked any of those kids who were out there, who didn't know what the Rotary experience was like, they would tell you that they had an amazing time. The kids wrote reflections about their day, about their time together, the amount of smiles that we saw, the amount of great feelings that we had and experienced, let us know that we met our goal of the day, which was a team-building experience. We had about 50 to 60 kids out there each day with their teachers, their counselors, their administrators, and they just, they absolutely had a blast. So it was really fun to be able to do that, to be able to look at the future and look at some things that we can do to make it even better for the students. We also had, struggling here, we had our annual club and activity fair, which took place a few weeks ago. So during each lunch period, students were able to learn about the different clubs that we offer at TCMS. And we have about 30 different clubs that we offer. Mr. Kanibroski was the really smart one. He's doing the culinary club. It's no wonder that he got 150 students to sign up for the culinary club because he was sharing recipes with the students and talking to them about all the things that they would, they would bake. So 150 kids alone in one club, and think of all of the others that, that we had. So students are starting to get emails from their club advisors, and clubs are starting to get up and running. I think I talked about this last year. One of the things we're really trying to do is offer clubs before and after school. Our buses, as you know, drop off by 7:10 at the latest. Homeroom doesn't start until 7:45. So there's a 35-minute period in there where the kids really enjoy sitting with each other and having breakfast, but it's also a great time for them to engage in different clubs. So some of our advisors are offering, like, one month they offer it in the morning, one month they offer it at 2:30. Because we also find that a lot of our seventh and eighth graders are hesitant to join clubs because they're like, "I'm in the play," or "I have, you know, softball practice," or something like that, "so I can't make the whole club meeting, so I don't want to go." So they could come in the morning. So we're really working at finding ways to make sure that all of our students are engaged in at least one activity. We had, we continue our home base activities and celebrate community. In this past month, our students made their, in their homerooms and their wins, they made their shields, their coat of armor to represent them. So if you walk through the hall outside of all of our classrooms, they each have their coat of armor to represent all of the students that are in that small, little family there. Priority area this month is academic excellence. So we're continuing, we're really, we're purposeful in our creation of our master schedule to ensure that our teachers have time to plan both interdisciplinary, but also with their grade-level content area peers. So that's been a priority in our, in our master schedule to help support the work that teachers are doing with students. We're continuing to do work around unit design and transfer goals to develop those attributes identified in our profile of a graduate. We are doing some work, we just had our first meeting the other day, to explore equitable, equitable grading practices at the middle school. We're supporting Power School for curriculum continuity. We're doing some work around the intentional use of technology and also homework and, and the assignment of homework. And then we're continuing to work with our consultants to support the development of culturally responsive practices. This month, I think in two weeks from now, we have folks coming out from Bosse's to continue like, kind of leg two of our inclusive language protocol and work with, with teachers and with students. Dates to note, we've got our ENL picnic coming up. AP Brooks, Mrs. Edwards, and I are all going into classes this week to have smaller conversations about what it feels, what it's like, and what we have to do to make sure that we all feel safe in school. We've got our district day of dance and our first activity night coming up on Saturday, red ribbon week next week, and we're already doing first marking period data reviews, which is crazy to think about. Halloween is coming up. End of the marking period will be here before we know it. So lots of things to look forward to in the next few weeks.
Just a quick question. You, you mentioned that you get reflections from the students after the outdoor ed. We all love outdoor ed. We think it's a huge, great tradition. Are we able to learn from those, you know, ways to tweak the program for future years? Or are they more this impact to the students and things like that?
Honestly, it, the, the feedback that we were able to gather from students, rain always dampens, literally and figuratively, dampens everything, right? So on one of the days, rain kind of limited some of the activities that students were able to do. So we are already starting to think about next year, how do we swap those things out to make sure that rain, regardless of whether it rains or not, students are going to be able to have the same experience every day that they go out there. Other than that, we thought about, like, some, like, the capture the flag activity was a little longer than it needed to be, right? So can we do two activities in that time instead of one? Because there's a little bit of sitting around. But the students love the tug-of-war. We did, we didn't do that at camp. We did that back at school. Mr. Wasserman did it. But just like they had the experience out at Rotary Camp, so they got that. They did the kumihama, which is the, the fabric when they're creating the ties and the fabric. They were able to do that at school before they went, which is an experience they would have had at camp. So they had that. They had the smores. They had the archery. They had so many of those kind of traditional experiences that they've had at outdoor ed. The feedback from the kids was they loved it. They loved just being with each other, which I think, sometimes I've talked to the coordinators for, like, the bonfire over the years, where they try to plan 500 things to do in a small amount of time. And I keep telling them, "Listen, that's all great. The kids really don't care so much about that as just wanting to be with each other and laughing." And we find that they're the most creative when we just let, when we get out of the way and let them do that. So they really, they did enjoy it. The ones, the students who have older siblings that are like, "Oh, I went for two days," or, you know, "Back seven, eight years ago before COVID, we did this." You know, of course, they felt like, "Well, why didn't I get that opportunity?" But I think, you know, a lot of things have shifted in society now and in our times, and this was the, the change that we needed to make to ensure that the stu, that we were able to best meet our goal with the resources that we had.
Always evolving. That's a good thing. That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Principal Tappan.
All right, I don't want to breeze over this beautiful slide with a guest bus driver, if you can see him. Mrs. Bertino. Yes, that is what I'm greeted to often by Mrs. Bertino's son in the morning. He has won the hearts of many on his bus. So, so, let's see, October is fire safety month. So a little different this year. Our counselors have taken that role in the past. Our librarian has stepped up to coordinate that, which means you get the experience out on the bus loop with the fire truck and being able to see it and climb into it and see everything with it. And you get the experience with the firefighters inside, explaining about fire safety, doing some practicing of that, and reading a really great book that supports it. So I wanted to thank Adel Motskovich, who took that role on and really loves it and is going to expand upon it even after the firefighters are gone. So, so we have four Fulbright scholars, and it says more to come because Danielle and I both have them in our buildings. And we are going to actually ask them to come and be a part of next, in November. They're going to share with you a little bit about the program. But this is Ms. Michelle. She is from Singapore. She is paired with Jill Davis, one of our amazing music teachers. And one of the lessons that they did was a traditional dance from China. She taught it, the kids learned it. And then what I love even more, she only gets to come on Tuesdays, so that's like a third of our population that gets that. Ms. Davis taught it to all the rest of the first and second graders. And this week, even though she doesn't work with Mrs. Grenat, she's going to be teaching Ms. Grenat in one of her classes, so that Ms. Grenat then can teach all of our other first and second graders, and they're on, working on what they'll do for kindergarten. So it's just one experience, or one example of how the Fulbright scholars are influencing us. And I was able to meet with their advisor today and take a tour of the building. And really, the only complaint we have is we want them more. We wish they could spend more time with us, although they have a very rigorous schedule that they're going to tell you about. But just to have their expertise, their cultures, and being able to share who they are with our kids is just such a joy, and we appreciate it. So we have four. Sharon is from the Philippines. Innocent is from Uganda. Ramin is from Bangladesh, and Michelle is from Singapore. And they're paired with Wendy Elmer Kaiser, Rebecca Rizzo, Nicole Yurles, and Jill Davis. So across the board, and you'll hear more from them next time, so it's just a teaser. So our fall focus habits, I talk about these a lot, and I know that I mention them almost every time I'm up here, but it's just amazing to see how it continues to be brought to life by our classroom teachers and our special area teachers. So the first picture is actually in our AIS suite, our Academic Support Instructors suite. And you can see kids are tacking up when they went to AIS for maybe some extra support in reading or extra support in math. They're choosing which habit that they were using during their time, and they're making little Post-Its. That is so full now. It's amazing from when I took this picture. And then Andrea Yaman, one of our extended, well, our extended studies teacher, has come up with this entire fall focus habit, and she's involved the Bruin. We don't get as much time with the Bruin, just because we don't have the sports and things like that. We like to bring the Bruin down for some extra fun, but really using some real-life examples to have kids figure out what the Bruin and what habit of mind is the Bruin using. And kids are voting on which, which habit of mind, so super interactive. And then, for the first time ever, we did a square one art. So square one art is a fundraiser that the PTSA has done over the last several years. It's a really great project. You've probably seen it or heard of it. The kids do some type, type of drawing, and then it comes to you, and you can either order, you know, coasters, or a bag, or a whole bunch of different things. Well, it's kind of gone a little bit away, and last year, PTSA and I thought out of the box, and how could we use, you know, have a gathering time? And, you know, we weren't expecting, or I didn't know at the time we did that, that Ms. Lisa was going to retire, and we were going to, you know, have a turnover and have Ms. Kalusha. So within her first three weeks of being at Council Rock after being at the high school, she organized this event. I can't even tell you. So it was well-attended. It was actually the perfect amount. If we had had more, it would have been a little bit too much. But she created exemplars for every table for the kids. She was around. It was wonderful to see her introducing herself to so many families, to have little siblings, older siblings, all creating art together and really working together. And it was just, so I just want to make sure that I thank her, thank the PTSA for doing that. I hope it makes money, but really, just watching everyone have a good time in community and, and spend and celebrate art was really worth it just for that, so. And then, speaking of creating community, as I walked around the building through September and then continuing into October, it's just this sense of how they're building communities within their classrooms. So on the top left, you have Ms. Genzel's class, and they created an entire class quilt where they talked about reflecting on who they are, how they represent themselves, and then how they fit together as a whole team and as a whole class. The middle is one of our newest teachers, Ms. Moore, who teaches first grade as well, talking about their class being a family and really talking about what that means, talking about how they support each other, what they're going to expect from each other. And then, this is one of my favorites. It's a repeat, but Mrs. Buchi at kindergarten spells out all of their names and has a little Lego, after she meets them on opening day or that meet the teacher, she builds a little Lego that looks as much like them as you can with Legos. And they have that representing for them when they come in, and they love to look and find their name. And it just really builds that community and that welcoming nature in our classrooms. So as Dr. Edman said, academic excellence is our focus. And as I looked around at what we are, our goals are, so thanks to Dr. Rio, who kind of spearheaded the way, artificial intelligence was a big offering at our superintendent's conference day. Everyone had some experience with it, whether they were a beginner up to kind of the advanced. So we're really trying to learn more about that. Power School, which was also mentioned by Dr. Edman's, our teachers are able to access their curriculum and be able to see it all in a nice, organized way. We're really looking at the other elements of Power School, which is collecting data and then being able to manipulate data. We're really excited about that. Wit and Wisdom, we talked about it all last year. We had five teachers, plus our new teachers who came on board, who are all on board. So all first and second grade students and teachers are now engaging in Wit and Wisdom. And it's amazing to see the collective knowledge and support that our veterans, we'll call them, it's their second year, but their comfort level and what they're doing to help their colleagues get through. It's like it isn't their first year because of the wisdom, no pun intended, but because of what they're sharing with their colleagues and helping them get through. And then, you know, our APPR process, which is so unique and wonderful, is that many of our teachers who are tenured can choose to do a professional focus. And that really allows teachers to, and staff members, to choose something they're interested, passionate in, and do a deeper study of it. I have about 18 teachers who have found each other, who are reading The Anxious Generation and doing a book study on that, because I think we're all thinking, what is the impact of the technology? We have forwarded it. We've, we figured out what to do, but what is our role as primary teachers? And I know that that goes all the way through. So I'm really excited to study with them, to learn with them. We started with a kickoff of a webinar by the author and then dividing up that through, and this is all teacher-driven. You know, I don't assign that. This is all their choice to participate in this. Think about it, and, you know, think about what does it mean specific to Council Rock and at the primary level, where they have that first, you know, first interactions in school with, with technology, so. We've got lots of things coming up. Kindergarten movie night, which is always exciting, is this Friday. Doors open at movie night, which is always exciting, uh, is this Friday. Uh, doors open at 5:30 and the movie begins at 6:00. Uh, it is not a drop-off event. It is a stay-with-your-kids event, uh, and the movie is the Garfield movie. Uh, I know I'm excited to see it. I haven't seen it yet. Uh, Red Ribbon Week is next week. We've got our Fall Costume Parade, uh, on Halloween at 9:30 and 1:30 in the bus loop, as long as it's nice. Uh, DiVale, I know DiVale changes every year, but it couldn't have come at a better time for an elementary teacher. I know Carrie Lynn will, will, uh, will be with me on that. Um, so it is the Friday after Thanksgiving. And then we are already into parent-teacher conference time, which again, um, we are really hopeful that we will have everyone come and participate to talk about their children, share with us their joys and, uh, talk about their goals for the year. I will talk all about dismissal because that comes up. We'll talk about that the next time because that will be when it's closer. Um, but any questions?
No, it's great. It was, uh, it was at the Monroe County School Board Association President's Meeting and they talked about that book, The Anxious Generation, and we're recommending it to people. So I appreciate that you've got people on your team who are jumping into that proactively. So thank you. Questions from the rest of the board? Principal Tappan, thank you. Tom Hall.
As Tom's making his way up, I will say, we typically don't, um, dig too far into or notice or monitor social media regularly, but the book, The Anxious Generation, was mentioned on a Brighton page recently by a younger parent saying, what are we doing about this? Perhaps by the time our kids get older, because at the elementary, kids are not allowed. And the person wrote, one, how great that book is, which our leadership team is actually doing a study of that, but also, uh, looking for something, not being aware actually of the great work that Danielle and Tom have done in this area. Um, so I mentioned as Tom's coming up, but the middle school not having phones accessible at all has worked out really, really well. And the high school, uh, significantly limiting them, particularly in classrooms. And kind of that's a very Brighton gradual release of responsibility and understanding how to utilize something that is a distraction to frankly, many, including adults, including all of us, I think. So, uh, you guys have gotten off to a great start, Tom. Just want to point that out.
Agreed.
Good.
Thank you.
I'm glad you didn't disagree that you've gotten off to a great start, Tom. So good work.
It was a great read this summer, actually. A lot of our staff have been reading it as well. Um, so the club fair, this is in our lower gym because, um, our gym obviously is not available. Uh, the weather wasn't great that day, so we moved it inside. We did it for two days. That was the first time we've ever done it, over two days. Um, lower gym, and then we did it in the outside. Um, after our evacuation drill, actually, kids had plenty of opportunity to visit, um, over 84 club tables, um, and pick up information, sign up for clubs. And I will say, Mark Lincoln, who oversees the clubs and activities now, um, we probably had more interest generated this year than ever. And I think it, part of it was the two days, which our school-based equity team recommended last year and, um, our culture climate leadership team, big focus to get more students involved in clubs and activities. And a plus with the wall that we set up, um, uh, again, a recommendation from our, um, school-based equity team and culture climate leadership team to put posters in the hallways. Um, every club gets their own, um, page with their title, what the description is, and then, uh, contact information for the advisor. And many of these have actually changed because once the club met, they revised and made their own, um, club announcement to put in there to, to, um, advertise their club. So this is on the school. This is getting a lot of press. So very exciting. Um, but that club fair was really well-attended and a lot of students signing up. We're hoping to be over 85%. Typically, we're about 80, 81% was students who were involved in a club or activity. Reunion tours continue. We did our 74 and 84 tour. We have a class of 1964, 60 years coming back on October 26th. Looking forward to see them. Um, and homecoming, even though it seems like it was a year ago now, uh, homecoming happened. It was an exciting, um, exciting week and weekend. Our executive council, students, class councils got really involved. More than ever, I agree with Danielle was saying, just like things are seeming finally back to normal. Um, very involved. Lots of activities, lots of theme days. Um, Adam Sandler Day on the right, faculty dressing like students on the left. We had so much fun with that. Lot of spirit, lot of theme. This was the day of the parade. Of course, the Bruin is out. Even high school students love getting pictures with the Bruin. Some famous people you might see in there in that photo.
Mostly our kids.
Nobody. That was a great, a great opportunity. Um, the Bruin was everywhere that day. And then moving along with our theme days, we also had the pep rally because we couldn't be in the gym. We did our, um, pep rally at night on the field. Worked out very well. And ultimately, the results that were announced at the game on Saturday, seniors took first place, sophomores took second place, freshmen took third, and our class of 2026 took fourth. But they're hoping to come back and be in the top three next year. See where they are. Our poor juniors did a phenomenal job. Love that class.
That's trash talking from the principal right there. That's impressive.
Love it. Little, little, just a lot, a lot of, um, incredible people putting in forth effort. Um, something new this year at our dance, which we had at the middle school. Thank you, Ms. Ed, Dr. Edmonds, for sharing your space with us. Um, the students took over the attendance office at night and that was like the, um, uh, place to get drinks and snacks. And they sold them out of the, the little window there. And our seniors, um, actually were the DJs. The dance had over 310 students, which we haven't seen in a homecoming dance in forever. And everybody's very appropriate. It was great. Um, not many juniors, not many seniors, mostly sophomores and freshmen. So the seniors took over and played the music all night and they did a phenomenal job. Very happy. Uh, some great events that'll be happening at the high school and our visual and performing arts. Our performing arts season is ready to begin with Black Coffee by Agatha Christie. That'll be on November 8th and 9th, followed by Mama Mia and others as we go through the year. But, uh, so going to be a great performance and really looking forward to the big musical in February as well. Uh, seniors, don't forget, put your pictures, your ads. Everything's due by the 30th. Um, academic excellence is the goal that we're talking about tonight, um, with the board. Just a couple highlights with our, what we're doing at the high school. Um, hope to share more later this year, but we have created a document with expectations and recommendations that we've given to all of our faculty around grading expectations and recommendations that all faculty should be following or starting to review and take under consideration. We're exploring all of those topics even more this year. And one of the things I think Mr. Tappan will be happy with, um, with our comment section for the regions, uh, for the report cards, looking to adapt habits of mind for the comments in the report card. Instead of just, you know, pleasure to have in class, have a wonderful summer, like giving some meaningful feedback to parents, uh, that is in relation to habits of mind. Lots of activities happening, happening over the next few weeks. Uh, picture retakes are this Thursday. Um, our PST, PSAT will be given in the middle school as well to all of our juniors. Thank you again, Dr. Edmonds, being very flexible with us to come over, take over both gyms for the PSAT that day on the 30th. Uh, our end of the quarter is coming already on November 8th. And that's about it. Any questions?
Questions or comments from the board? I would just say, I think the gym will be great when it finally arrives. And, uh, our appreciation to the entire school community for doing the things necessary to work around that. It's gonna be great, but it's no fun waiting for it to appear.
I cannot wait to share the pictures, um, maybe at the next board meeting where I present. Hopefully it'll be done.
Yes, for sure. At the next board meeting. Could share some pictures.
Okay, excellent. Excellent.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. I will now invite up our host, Colleen. And a thanks for hosting us tonight. We appreciate it. I know it puts a little bit more pressure on you and your team.
All good, all good. So the theme for this month is really celebration. And I already mentioned just celebrating the opening of the gym and just how exciting it was. And the workers who are in there were fantastic and great communication. So we're thrilled. Um, continuing to celebrate in October, just celebrating everyone who assisted with getting our routines and expectations in place. Um, Dr. Malloy for organizing all of our bus safety. We had, um, Ms. Moser over. She was helping with all of our evacuation drills, fire drills, lockdown drills. Um, and then you have a picture here of Mr. Simmons and Mrs. Wheeler with our, um, Brighton Believes assemblies at the start of the year. So we've had a lot of things to celebrate as we've moved into October. Um, celebrating learning is another area I just wanted to highlight. If you take a quick look, this is just a quick walk through the building and seeing kids writing, full pages of writing. The kiddo in the top left corner was very excited to have an entire page of writing, which was the goal of his this year. So if we take a picture, we send it to my mom. Very excited about celebrating that. So we've got kids reading on the top right, writing on the left, and then at the bottom, the kids are working on New York State history. So lots of excitement and joy in the classrooms. Um, following a little bit of what, uh, Matt had said about wit and wisdom, many of our teachers are on their second year. Some are going into, I want to say their third year. And for our newer teachers, the kids are coming in with the knowledge of wit and wisdom as the teachers are new to the process. So it's really interesting seeing where the kids have the familiarity, where the teachers are learning. Um, and this is a teacher who's on her second year, I believe, of wit and wisdom. They're studying the heart and you can see they're doing things with reading, writing, creating presentations, working with their teachers, working in small groups. So they're really into a rhythm in learning in the classrooms. Continuing with the theme of celebration, we're celebrating all of our clubs and activities, uh, similar to the secondary level. Here's one of our two girls on the run teams kicking off their first practice. And then we had bingo has been huge. I think we're up to third grade and fourth grade at this point. And then we have other clubs. Uh, Katie Fallon has worked to create a club and activity page on the website. So if you look right there, it has all the clubs and activities. There's QR codes for parents to sign up on. Uh, at our PTSA meeting last week, we spent a lot of time talking about the clubs, activities, and happenings for kids at FRES. Um, we're excited that band chorus and orchestra has started. We're doing a new theme this year or new format, where's the fixed schedule Monday through Friday, um, for band chorus and orchestra, just to help parents with childcare, to help with transportation and all of that. So parents have been thrilled just to have that consistent schedule for them versus a six-day cycle in the morning. Um, some of our clubs and activities, I want to make sure I mention them all. So we have, um, STEM and robotics. We have coding. We have rainbow club, tree huggers club, multicultural club, um, and hoping to do, uh, theater club sometime in the spring. Continuing to celebrate community, you can see a whole bunch of our staff out at homecoming. We've been celebrating working as a community, getting our habitats and our courtyards ready for the school year and having learning spaces. It was fun watching the kids weed. Some of them have done it before and some have not, but they were excited to be outside one day to give a little break in learning. Um, celebrating with our kids at High Five Fridays and also doing our community circles every morning. One of our students actually, um, asked if she could celebrate her culture with her class and it was pretty exciting. Um, they were spot, they were in the spotlight at the Memorial Art Gallery for Hispanic Heritage Month. And they actually highlighted the Peruvian culture. So her and her mom were able to, um, talk a little bit about their foods and their language and their dancing. So not only did they do that at the Memorial Art Gallery, but they came in and were able to celebrate with the classmates in fifth grade as well. Continuing on to celebrating our faculty and staff and keeping with the Jeep theme that we're introduced to on opening day of school, we provided all the teachers with lucky ducks at one of our faculty meetings. They all named their duck. They all have a different number. And throughout the school year, morning announcements, we're calling some random lucky duck, duck numbers, and they can come down and pick out a prize. So little things, but it brings joy, whether it's a cinnamon bun, um, a new pen or something for their classroom. We just have a lot of things to pick. Um, I also want to take a minute just to celebrate our PTSA. We have had huge turnouts at our events so far this year. This is our welcome back picnic with our families that we had at the end of September. And then last week, we had our first movie night and this room was packed. We watched Inside Out 2. There were kids in sleeping bags. There were parents on the back. I think the parents laughed more than the kids during the movie, but it really was a great opportunity for families going into the long weekend. And finally, as we look at academic excellence and what's happening here at FRES, I did talk a little bit about wit and wisdom. Um, Jen Gallo, our ILT, has been working with our new teachers and supporting them in wit and wisdom, especially at fifth grade as they're embarking on that this year. She's also been doing additional letters training. Um, Stefana, she's been supporting our teachers with building thinking classrooms in math. And she's been pushing and she went to, um, a conference recently and bringing that back and helping teachers. Um, going back to Jen Gallo, she's also guiding some of our teachers through the Writing Revolution book study. It was so popular, she's on her second round of that with staff. So that's been a welcomed, um, learning experience for teachers and something they're asking for more of. Um, I should also mention that our ILTs are helping run our committee meetings this year. We're also doing something a little different in that all of our committees are meeting on the same day. So it really helps with after-school commitments. Everyone knows Mondays are our meeting dates. So Janine has been working with some social studies curriculum, also creating opportunities for our kids as they prepare for different holidays or different events happening. We're setting up a kids' voting opportunity on election day where they're voting on a school-wide themed day. So we're excited to roll that out. Kids are excited to go down to the ballot box to vote on what kind of day we're going to have. Um, and Katie Fallon's continuing to do lunch and learn with technology and different tools to support the classrooms and teachers. That's been very welcomed as well. Um, if you're ever walking through the building, our ILTs have a new suite. And so it's very opening and welcoming for teachers. Now getting a lot of traffic and able to support teachers in small groups, um, and meetings in a little conference space as well as just help them in any way they need. Looking at the end of October, we have lots of events, um, many mentioned by the other principals. We do have our third grade Halloween parade. We're working around the Council Rock schedule too. So we have families that are at both buildings. We're able to do that in the afternoon. Um, as I mentioned, we are in fourth grade bingo this week, fifth grade bingo, I believe, next week. We have our book fair coming up and we're going to use a local bookstore again. And we'll have a family night as well as book fair during the day. And then we're getting into teacher conferences and bachelor in the day. So it's been busy and hard to believe we're talking about November.
Again, we're going to thank you for hosting us. I know as the sort of principal with your staff, it puts a little bit more pressure on to make sure everything's straight and around. The school looked great when we got here. Um, so thank you. Also make a note, and Dr. Gasparino and I are maybe a little, maybe Carrie Lynn too, a little bit more familiar with this. The number of times I go up and down Edgewood in a week in the evenings and on Saturdays and Sundays and see kids on the playground, um, I think sometimes we forget that this school is an important part of the community around here and it provides a safe place for the kids to go play. I mean, that new, uh, whole playground setup is wildly populated on Saturdays and Sundays. It's always amazing to me. I think, is school in session today? There's so many kids there. So appreciate that you all are also good neighbors for all the kids in this community. So thank you for that as well.
Even on Superintendent's Conference Day, the playground was packed. You know, it was families were trying to figure out where to pack, where to park so they could go out to the playground. So it really is used all the time.
Thank you very much. Questions from the board before?
Can I just say how happy I am to see the smiling bear on the gym floor?
I was waiting to.
Good point. Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, next up, we have approval of some first read policies. Um, these are all revised to comply with changes in the law. Uh, nothing of great magnitude in terms of the changes and this is a first read, should you have any questions. But I'll read each one by policy number and then ask for an approval for all three at once. First, policy 2110, internal operations, orienting and training board members. Policy 3110, community relations, media slash municipal governments, senior citizens, and a policy 3271, community relations, solicitation of charitable donations. Motion to approve these first read policies.
So moved?
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Carrie Lynn. All those in favor?
Hi.
Also have, as we get from time to time, um, approval of bids, in this case for fine paper supply, um, collaborative bids to help us get the best possible price for the community. Any questions in regards to this bid? Motion to approve the bid.
So moved?
Moved by Esther? Seconded by Christina. All those in favor?
Hi.
Next up, we have approval of the consent agenda, which includes field trip approval for the Natural Helpers, November 11th through the 16th in Canandaigua, some fundraising activities as always. And it's my old dad joke, I love the opportunity for eating and getting my car washed. So these are all great. Um, and then finally gifts. We do read out each of the gifts, um, and I'll do that now. First, a gift in the amount of $2,170 from the Brighton Education Fund to the ASPIRE program at 12 Corners Middle School. This gift will be used to fund field trips for ASPIRE students in ways that will motivate them to attend school and inspire them to work hard, connect with each other, and experience academic success. Field trips include Wickham Farms to learn more about food production and mindfulness in nature, Rock City for a rock climbing adventure that will focus on challenging themselves and supporting each other, and participation in the Rochester Broadway Theater League Arts Learning Partners Program around the musical The Wiz. Second gift, a gift from Dr. Thomas Ashby to the Visual and Performing Arts Department of two Yamaha B-flat clarinets with stands, neck straps, mouthpieces, and cleaning swabs and two Kessler Alto saxophones with mouthpieces. And third, a gift from Mr.